The Village Witness to the Divide in the United States of America. The Royal Public Service Commission, one nation, one government, and it is all liberty and that's what it's about.
People that signed up for public speaking today, do you want to go now or later?
Mine will go now.
Scott?
Scott Richner, sixteen Pratt Street. I just have a question. I'll be the first one to touch off the powder keg about power. Our hydro allotment, is that based on a total for the month or is that a demand at any given time?
I think that's based on demand at any given time.
It's based on a contract signed with the New York Power Authority that goes through the year 2040 for a lot of thirteen thousand nine hundred, thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety-one KW right for the man.
Okay, so it goes by demand, not a total. And the second question I had was, where is the village out on the Rabidu Way sale or possible sale?
That was your thing, Brian. Did you ever get the appraisal? Did I contact him? I reached out and contacted the guy. He never, he never got back to us. You were supposed to sign a contract with him for fifteen hundred dollars to do the appraisal? I never got a contract from him to sign. I reached out to him a few times and...
Okay, and actually, one more thing to do with the Rabidu Way property. In talking to people, a lot of people have expressed an interest in possibly creating a community garden because a lot of people don't have large enough yards to have a garden. If some, if nobody were to be interested in that property, is that something we could explore doing there?
The thing that is down there, Mr. Scott, that, it used to be some blacktop in there, different places and stuff, and it was filled up a little bit because there used to be a trailer port there. So I don't know how good that would be to-
Okay.
-to have it dug up or whatever.
So the best option would probably, if anything were to be done there, it would probably be reziments.
Yes.
Anything along that lines.
Okay. I was thinking for that, the space is, there's a lot of land we have next to the sewer plant that might be better, but we'll still probably have to test that-
Yeah.
-to make sure. Could've got a lot of vacant land there. But I think that'd be the best spot. Next person, Nick Southwick.
Nick Southwick, seventeen Washington Avenue. So a lot of people are asking about, wow, I can't read my hand ready. They're asking about Rider A, which is, which the New York State Municipal Power Authority authorizes that. Can you please explain, goes on record, what Rider A does and why it wasn't in place before the winter months?
Rider A just allows us the ability to charge supplemental power to those who have a high demand but don't necessarily have a lot of employment and don't, don't fall into various different amount of programs. So a data server, a Bitcoin miner, those would be paying for it. Plattsport uses it for a couple of places. I've been trying to get it going, but I haven't had much work.
Okay, I just, I just want to-
Can I interject to that?
Yeah.
I also think too that you have to, you have to, it says it's not, it's not, does not qualify for the New York Power Authority Municipal Rural Cooperative Economic Development Program. And I thought it was state, I thought, you stated before that this company that you're talking about is part of that, that's why this is not done, for one thing. Plus two, if you look at that last meeting, Rider A was discussed by a customer who's not even a utility customer of ours.
Yeah, not yet.
So-
And Andrew and them are not here to discuss it yet.
You could probably tell them on your computer there, though. You probably could tell them on your computer, though.
I'm not quite, do you think they're watching?
Probably.
Yeah. So we can't really, there's no talk about, I can't presume I do.
Tell me about them, right?
Anything else, Ned?
I guess I just wanted to express my thanks to the village workers who were out a couple of months ago when the, I think it was like a line snapped and power was out and that was sub-zero temperatures. That was a lot of work and I think a lot of people all appreciate their efforts. It's a lot of hard work.
Thank you. No one can hear what is being said on this street? Marilyn Beal?
Yep, one-time resident, eighty-eight years old. The extra power that is necessary due to big businesses, I've been trying for years to get big business charged with that extra supplement that is, once we've used the hydropower, that, that was years ago negotiated by previous boards and that was for the people of Niles' Point. And when big business comes in here and they need, they use both who fill up, so you've got to buy supplement. I maintain that that supplement should be distributed through, to the big businesses and leave our little social security check alone. Hundred and fifty dollars this month for my little social security check. My pension check from Wyeth is eight dollars and eight cents. I called the Public Service Commission and they tell me that, we've been going around Robin, our, years ago, we went around Robin. I called PSC, got a complete number, and all they did was call the village board and the village board called me and we just-
Gone around Robin.
Wrong Robin for nothing. So, but this morning I called and he said that the first lady I got, it accidentally disconnected. So the second one I got, a man, I asked him his name and he has, said his name was Elliot. And he said what you have to do is petition them to change the way the building is done. So can I ask you to the diet, Joel and Benny and Brian and Neil? Can you do that tomorrow morning and petition it? I mean, come on.
Petition the company?
Petition to change the, the way you're, I, I think it's unfair to charge, to send any of that extra supplement on the village people. It should, I'll be charged to all the big, you've got your Plastics out there by the golf course, you've got Lincoln Boulevard, the custom house and, and of course that, the complaint is about that big place that's heating the outdoors there right now. They're maintaining the fact that the doors are open and they are, I mean, that's a sense of waste like that. And they never should have been allowed in. I always, I always told them, don't let that Bitcoin come in here, but they let that in the data center and that's a bad because those machines have to be kept at a temperature that, you know. Can I ask you to, to do that tomorrow?
Who do you want us to petition?
I can't hear you because I've got my hearing aids in and everything with fresh batteries and I, I couldn't even hear these guys.
Who do you, Adam Gepat, who do you want us to petition?
Public Service Commission.
Oh, Public Service Commission.
Yeah. And the man that told me that, his name is Elliot. And I didn't realize it, but all the numbers and stuff are on the back of the page that you sent here, but I didn't know that. I had, I went around Robin to try and get numbers and, and names and how to go about getting it done.
Are they on the back of your bill?
Yeah. Yeah, eight, hundred three four two three three seven seven. And even, and then, and you keep calling and see, I don't have a computer. I'm not computer, I, I can use one, but I don't have one at home. I don't have, I don't have a cellphone. Well, I have one, my daughter gave it, like, it's not something I use, like, like they, most things they use in the air. I don't have that. And, uh, all I do is, is look at the iPad. I don't know how to send or put anything on the iPad, but my daughter Melinda set it up and I can look at it and see the babies that live far away and that satisfies me. It's all I'm looking for, like, yeah.
Can I get, can I get with you after the meeting so I can get that phone number? Because I've got a bunch of my bills for where I live and I don't have the rest of that information if you've got on them.
If you get a bill in the mail, all that information is on the back of your bill.
Yeah, it's in there, I just don't have it.
Plus, it's also focused on the website.
Is that a copy?
No, it's not.
I called the village to get the number. Three four two-
Three four two, this three seven seven?
Three three seven seven. And then the other things that to write, they, they want you to write them, you can get the three Empire State Plaza.
I know I've got this at home, but at the same time, it's in my hands, I'll just take care of this, be sure to get it.
Now, is there any way we can get our money back?
No, unfortunately. I don't believe that there is one. Would there be a way to refund that RSE? I don't think there is.
No.
No.
He says here, send a complaint, I'm complaining, is there any way to get my money back?
I doubt it.
You're going to give it to those guys running a big business.
Maybe she can get a piece of Bitcoin.
Remind me not to buy any of their business.
I can barely walk with my knees.
Some people can hear and some people can't. Any other public comments? That's the last of the people that signed in.
Can I add myself to the list?
State your name.
Steve Deesow, thirty-nine Montgomery. Mr. Mayor, have we established whether or not sixty-four Maple breaking the law and mining cryptocurrency?
No one has given me probable cause to do anything. There's one place I, I did shut down, but they admitted to a, to a police officer who then sent me that, that evidence that they admitted to Bitcoin mining. I have not had any evidence like that for that property over at Wyeth and I can't, we can't really do much without probable cause, the sworn statement and affidavit.
What type of businesses use that much electricity in that space and make that type of noise and open the doors in the wintertime?
That could be any number of companies.
Such as?
If you're working, if you're looking at any tech company, if they're using computers for hosting webpages, hosting webpages, server, servers for banks, servers for possible-
So that'd be a server farm? Right, so it's either cryptocurrency or a server farm? Are there any other possi- possibilities in that space?
Not that I can think of.
So both of those are against our local law, right? The law that I read-
Well, strictly speaking, I'm breaking it right now with this computer, that computer, my cellphone.
Uh, I don't think you have a, I don't think you have a power load big enough to break our local law with those three devices.
The server farm doesn't require a high-density load.
So why is Ms. Beal paying a hundred and fifty dollars extra on her light bulb this month if it's not pulling a bigger load? It's not a high-density load, but it's sending, it's, everyone's paying a hundred dollars in this room, or a hundred and fifty in her case.
My sister, a hundred and sixty.
Hundred and sixty for a sister. And so-
It's going into somebody's light bulb.
And most likely, most likely, I think, no, you know, I have an engineering degree, you know, I'm not, I'm not stupid, I'm pretty sure they're mining cryptocurrency in there. Pretty sure there's probable cause. I mean, read, read the-
Being three, there's probably probable cause.
Read the meter. I mean, so now all of the elderly people in the community are going to suffer and spend another hundred and fifty dollars a month so we can mine some Bitcoin for a couple more months?
None of what you've given me or told me is probable cause.
What else could be in there?
As it, website hosting-
Which is a server farm. So besides a server farm or a cryptocurrency mining facility, what else could be in that building using that much electricity? That type of load, like what else could be in there?
I'm not going to speculate on that.
Are they making Teslas in there? I haven't seen any come out.
Mayor for our village.
I think somebody needs to look into it. I mean, the residents are hurting now. You know?
And I'm mad, too.
Yeah, I understand, you're on a fixed income. It's, that's inappropriate-
Yeah.
-to have a company that's most likely breaking a law, not be investigated- not paying taxes because they have fifteen years of no taxes, so they're not supporting our community.
They're still paying taxes. The way that thing works, if, let's say if the property's worth a hundred thousand, they're paying property taxes on a hundred thousand, but if they build something on it, brings up to two hundred thousand, they're only paying for the hundred thousand and it's, they, they went five years and it's pro-rated for the rest of the fifteen.
So what is that building that they have? They demolished all the buildings, so what are they paying taxes on? Probably less than one of our houses.
I do not know.
But they're taking a hundred and fifty dollars from every person in the community.
How about economic growth?
It's not economic growth.
Well, they want to build.
For one person.
And how, how can we sign a Rider A with a company that's most likely breaking a local law and hasn't fessed up to it? We don't even know what they're doing, how are we going to sign a Rider A with them?
I don't know what tenants are in there.
We don't even know what the tenants are. It's just a hotel for whoever wants to be in there, plug their computer in. The only people that we know are in there is Harry because he comes.
Harry's a consultant.
Yeah.
Two CSRI.
Two CSRI.
Who they came. RPMY.
RPMY Holdings.
Didn't somebody have to issue a certificate of occupancy and such?
That was my question.
Well, it's like a hotel and we just don't know who's in the hotel.
State your name, please.
Hi, I'm Laura Burt Sisson, I live in two Rock Street. And I have a couple of questions. The first one is, so I'm, I'm learning about the process, so I got this letter in the mail about the increase in electric costs and I am really happy that we use the hydro plan, but I'm not happy that our rates have increased significantly this month. So my first question had to do, because I'm, I'm hearing, you know, different things and I'm wondering what's true, what's not true, and how can we get to the bottom of this, and this is why I'm here at the meeting. So my first question was, if there are businesses, but we're not really sure, my husband is a, a building inspector, so I thought, there has to be an inspection in this new workplace or business, right? Because when something is created, there has to be certain certificates. So were there inspections of this workplace that were passed?
From my understanding, there was an inspection done to give a certificate of occupancy, but I don't have the information on that because that was a little bit over a year ago.
Are there anything else, like, this lady was just talking about, Ms. Beal was talking about, that would clue us into like the type of business and specific, like wattage use or anything like that, that would help us understand what's happening in this business?
Or trying to inspect the building, but they won't allow us in the building at this time.
So then they don't have, they don't have a license to run then, or operate? I mean, I'm not, I don't know, is it technical terms?
There isn't really a business licensing process in village law. They, they register with the county. Like, when I started my businesses, I registered the business name with the county-
Yeah.
-and then just started operating. My insurance inspection business is not on the village, like webpage, because there's a small business listing-
Uh-huh.
-but my drone company is and that's about all the paperwork I had to do in the village.
Okay. So that's good to know that there were inspection, for me, it's good to know, it's reassuring to know that the inspection was tried, but, you know, like you said, they wouldn't allow people in the building. Then the second question I have has to do with the breakdown of specific costs and here it says substantial amounts of electricity to conduct business, that certain customers required that and other factors. So luckily, our rates haven't gone up since December thirteenth, twenty thirteen, when Eris was in semi-full swing? I mean, some of you know when Eris shut down, but that employed like twelve hundred people. So is there any way for me as a consumer to feel better about my electric bill in knowing this is how much is allotted by residents and then this is how much is allotted by business? And then, like, let's say for a hundred workers, this is how much electricity is being consumed, but for a small business under ten, this is how much, so in other words, like a graph to show the allocation?
So you're looking at metadata?
Sure.
Jed?
Yes.
RSE has some numbers that you don't have to address that.
The billing that just went out March first, what I did was, I, we, the total billing, we sold ten million seven hundred one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six kilowatt hours. And out of that, the residential sales were four million six hundred ninety-two thousand one forty-one, which is forty-three point eight four percent of, of the total sales. Commercial sales was eight hundred sixty-four thousand four hundred thirty-five, which is eight point zero eight percent of sales. Industrial sales was four million seven eleven two hundred, which is forty-four point zero two percent of sales. Municipal street lighting was twenty-two thousand one sixty-one kilowatt hours, which is point two one percent of sales. Other public street lighting, total bill was six hundred ninety-six hours, which is point zero one percent. Other municipal sales, three hundred seven thousand one seventy-six was two point eight seven percent. And other public authority sales, ninety-four thousand nine hundred seventy-five were point eight nine percent. And sales to railroads was nine thousand seventy-two, four point zero eight percent.
And then, RSE, could you share what the residential usage was comparable last year to this year?
Last year, last year, or this year, the residents used approximately four hundred ninety-five thousand additional kilowatt hours.
This month or in the entire year?
No, compared to the same period last year.
Oh, thank you.
Compared to the same period last year.
And then, well, I'm not going to go by category, I'm going to hit the tool, and the other one's industrial sales, that's-
How much is that change?
Four million more. Four, four million more.
Million or billion?
Four million units more for industrial.
So commercially, you broke it into residential, commercial, industrial and municipal. So commercial and industrial. Can you, can you just give me the real breakdown? Because I was thinking commercial or business, right? And industrial is?
Commercial and business would probably be more like hotels, shops.
My guess is, sorry.
How, how are-
We have the two industrial.
How are they two different, commercial and industrial, like in a very small synopsis?
We only have two customers that are industrial. I'm not going to name them, but we only, there's only two of them, so-
Why can't you-
That's right, that's right in the annual report, so that's public information, so.
Why wouldn't you name them?
You want to give us-
I'm, I mean, I'm paying in my bill for them. It's part of me paying.
Doing that, okay.
Can we guess?
We can pay a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars more.
That's why I'm here, though.
I would say it's probably Champlain Plastics and sixty-four Montgomery Street. Champlain's Plastics was here last year.
So I guess this is the, this is the thing, right? So I'm just, I don't know much about, obviously, I feel like the town does a really great job. I didn't, I should have said that first. I like, I like the town I live in. This is worrisome to me, especially people on a fixed income. So I'm trying to get down to where the increase, is there even an increase because we know March is the coldest month? So these are the questions I'm asking, so it's a public, matter of public record, but do you want me to come into the office and dig through some files? I can take a day off work and do that, but basically, if I'm paying, someone's asking for me to pay for this, but I don't even know the allocation of where this is going. So it's just troubling, I mean.
The biggest is the four million dollar increase in industrial.
Okay, thank you.
Kilowatt, kilowatt.
The kilowatt.
And that's just within a month or within the last-
Same period.
Same time period as last year.
Same time period that you crunched. Thank you for having those statistics ready, I really appreciate that.
What would that work out to percentage-wise from year to year? Percentage increase? That would, that would probably help break it down.
We didn't plan the percent.
And you know, I know that industrial is a good thing, too, because it employs people.
You know, if you're saying, if you're saying the residential went up point two percent and the industrial went up forty percent, you know where the increase is.
Just an approximation.
Yeah.
Last year, twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, industrial sales were seven hundred forty-one thousand six hundred. This year, they're four million seven hundred eleven thousand two hundred.
Wow. So that's, that's the kicker there.
So seven to forty is a six-fold increase. It's a six-fold increase.
I hope the Sun newspaper would publish that.
Someone's absorbing the pot. Who pocket is this going into? Taking it out of Mrs. Beal's.
The past twelve months?
Oh, yeah.
She could go and coin business, get a piece of big money.
Because I like to graph that out. I like to make graphs. Do you have it going back the past two years?
Yeah.
And, and you know, I'm not anti-business, I just want to say that as a resident, I'm not, it's just-
You just won't understand what's going on.
Yeah. So people can make informed decisions and we all want to, we want to see our town flourish. We want, we want, we know we have cheap electric here, that will bring businesses, but we want it to be, I think we want it to be fair for the people who are, we don't want all that cost thrown on the shoulders of the people. It should be more fair we spread out, that's all I'm saying.
And Jed, as our mayor, you should be advocating for people like Mrs. Beal, who's eighty-eight years old, who's coming out at night in the winter. You, you should be helping out our village, advocating for this, finding out the explanation for her.
I may still owe one.
I wanted to have, I wanted to have a sit-down and talk with, like, ERS and these people to figure out, okay, if you're going to be using this much power, how can we figure out how to set it up so that you're not, that you're not hurting the already existing residents?
Yeah.
I've had to try, I've tried to have several meetings. Harry has seemed open to negotiations and what he, what they're willing to pay for their rates so that it wouldn't harm the residents. I've just been, I just haven't had luck getting meetings.
So I'm Matt Morris, I live at one eight two two six Watertown, New York, and I'm part of Lincoln Infrastructure and Commonwealth Energy. So I want to piggyback on that last comment.
Here.
Well, tomorrow, if you will, please.
So, I'm not done yet.
Oh.
So, that last comment and the comment over here, the key word is fair, right? I think what we want is just things to be fair. It's not fair for big business to come in, suck up a lot of energy, pass on the bill to residents, right? What the mayor is saying is that he's tried to have meetings, he's tried to have negotiations, and I can tell you that our company absolutely, one hundred percent, has said from the very beginning that we want to sit down, negotiate and talk about how we can take care of the energy issue and not pass on any costs to the residents. And those negotiations and those attempts have failed. Because there are certain people that apparently don't want to negotiate. So I opened the door again, that's absolutely what we want to do, and it is, it is incredible that someone's bill like this would increase like that on a fixed income. That, that ought to be criminal. All right? So let's, let's get to the table, let's talk about it, let's get to fair so that as a town, you can increase business, bring in new tax base, and it's fair to the residents. Does that make sense? That's all we're trying to get to, but apparently that's very difficult for some reason. So I'll have to add it up to you.
I brought it up, but we want to talk also with ERS, the people that get the bill, and we're waiting to hear back from our lawyer on everything.
Quick, quick question, Convault-
You're just a consultant and you're not the bill payer, so do we have to bring ERS into this?
Correct.
They're the bill payer.
Yeah.
But Convault's Energy and Lincoln Infrastructure are no longer a tenant, correct? They're a consulting firm.
Correct, we're a consultant, that's correct.
Yeah, so how can you negotiate- Yeah, so how can you negotiate the power usage when you're no longer a tenant in that building?
That's why I just said we need ERS involved as well.
So, so they're going to negotiate the next four million that we add on on top for the next hundred and fifty we add on to our bill every month? Is that what we're asking?
Negotiating the entire bill, how that works.
Because right now, we're.
How are you going to negotiate if somebody's breaking the law, though?
Yeah, right now, we're six-fold higher for industrial usage, and now we're going to negotiate with the next company, Convault and Lincoln Infrastructure, who's not a tenant, who's a consultant. So they want more power on top of what they're already using. What about what they're already using? What about the six-fold increase in industrial usage for this year? What about those tenants?
I'd be approaching negotiations from the standpoint of the entire amount they're using, not just what they're currently using.
But we don't even know who the tenants are to negotiate with, because we haven't gotten a list, right?
We don't even know what's in the building.
We don't know what's in the building, we don't know who the tenants are. We know that Harry's a consultant, but he doesn't use energy right now because he's not a tenant. But we're going to have a negotiation with these people we don't know, we don't know what they're doing. But Harry's willing to, I'm glad Harry's willing to negotiate, but he's not using energy right now because he's a consultant, not a tenant.
The part of my negotiation will be to find out what's going on there before we continue.
I think that's a great place to start.
So we have to get the talk started. We've got to get to the table and talk. That's the hardest part right now, because our lawyer's not here to help. Push this along, I've sent emails, Chris has sent emails. I'm just waiting. And I've been sending emails for a while, so you're finding out the five and a half. I was, I was going to bring it up to Tom today, but he's not here.
Well, tomorrow morning, are you going to petition the Public Service Commission to, to change the way this is happening?
Yep, I've got their phone number now, so I can give them a call.
Okay. Now, I'm going to lose my hundred and fifty this month, and every month previous to that, I've been signing my check eight under protest.
Why don't we give her?
We were supposed to get that back, you know? And, but they tell me that when they put the tank in, that hundred thousand went to the tank instead to us. I, I was told from somebody previously on the board that, no names, that's what I was told. So whether it's fact or not, I'm not sure. That's what I was told.
That's probably a couple of years ago. That's probably all, ten years ago, ten years ago? Well, it was ten years ago, it was probably Baghdad.
So I'm still waiting for my money to come back. And they just ask for way too much.
When you get the answer from Public Service, you're going to give her a call? Can I get your phone number? After the meeting, not publicly, because I don't want your phone number.
I can't hear you. You want my phone number?
After the meeting. So, so when I call them, I can call you back with an update.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm in the book, I've always been in the book.
She has an account on the clock. We have it.
Sixty-one, seventy-one, really easy to remember.
Okay.
Not before ten o'clock.
Not before ten o'clock. Don't worry about that.
I won't hear the phone because of my ears and the, 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 the.
I'm a night owl, don't worry about that. Okay, that's enough for open session right now. Minutes of the previous meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes I've written.
I just want to read another.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bills, any additions, modifications, or questions?
We have one addition, it's the industrial filter pump manufacturing company. It's for filter bags for the water plant, uh, three hundred and forty-four dollars and eighteen cents.
Make a motion, we pay the bills as amended. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence.
Very trusting.
One thing that I have for correspondence, Mr. Mayor, is at the last zoning board meeting and the last board meeting, there was a conversation about the comprehensive, uh, Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan. As far as where it stands, I indicated that I would reach out. I reached out to, uh, near, uh, Department of State and the individual that's handling this grant for us. Her name is Lisa Melville. And what Lisa indicated to me is that currently, our contract is in the draft stage. And it could take two weeks or up to a month, if not longer, before the contract would be approved, before it would be forwarded to, to the village.
Okay.
The other thing that I wanted to share with you is based upon the terms and conditions of, of the grant. The project is estimated to cost about eighty-five thousand. Seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars of that would be grant money, and the village would have to do a match of eighty-five hundred dollars. Eighty-five hundred dollars has been presented to, uh, Treasury Leterno to be budgeted for the upcoming budget.
Good, thank you.
That's all I have.
That's actually really good news.
What's eighty-five thousand for?
For our Smart Growth Comprehensive Plan. Still not go? It's my mask, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Somewhere, somebody's writing it down or something, I should be able to read it.
Yeah, I'll do all the numbers for you.
Is that all the correspondence?
That's all the correspondence.
Are there? Okay. So for me, uh, about the meeting. I'm just, I'd just like to have a small motion. Who's, like, who on the board is ready and willing to meet with these people? Or to figure out what's going on there, what we can do about the energy costs, make sure that they're paying their share so it doesn't fall on the residents to pay any supplemental.
Well, right now, it's in the attorney's hands, and we're told that.
Now, this is a resolution just from the board, like, are we willing to do this? I make the motion for a resolution.
Are we in the process of, didn't the ERS attorneys say that the only ones that they can talk to is our attorney? That's, that's what I'm under the impression.
Yeah.
That we can't, we can't talk, nobody.
We're not talking to them independently, it's just, do we as a board support having a conversation?
Of course, with anybody.
Motion, second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes?
With legal.
With legal counsel, obviously.
Right. With legal counsel.
It just can't be like, this is not. And Tom Pucker. And that's all I have.
Oh, you have the resolution, Joe.
Oh, that's right, the resolution, it's not on the agenda, so I almost missed it. Okay, resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash zero eight, Village of Rousas Point, Knights of Columbus, council number twenty-three sixty-six, hundred year anniversary. Whereas more than one hundred years ago, a group of one hundred and five Knights of Columbus members from various areas were gathered in the Village of Rousas Point expressing an interest in the order and the need of a meeting place. And whereas these gentlemen formed a night, uh, a club for knights only, and a charter was sought and granted, resulting in the birth of Rousas Point Knights of Columbus, number twenty-three sixty-six, on April second, nineteen twenty-two. And whereas on August thirteenth, nineteen twenty-five, it was moved, that money we set aside for building a, for a building fund. And on May twenty-eighth, nineteen thirty, the law on which the present St. Patrick's Parish Center now stands. And whereas through the hard work and efforts of many knights, the building fund drew, and in nineteen fifty-two, the members of council twenty-three sixty-six established a building committee whereby plans were formulated for the erection of a new home. In nineteen fifty-three, the original council rooms were vacated, and the formal dedication ceremonies of the new building were held, November eighth, nineteen fifty-one. Whereas the council rooms have served as the locale for activities of many civic organizations and various celebrations. And whereas council number twenty-three sixty-six has grown and prospered for one hundred years. And whereas the officers, members, and families of the Rousas Point Council, number twenty-three sixty-six, have been, and are dedicated to family life and lending assistance to the less fortunate of the community. And whereas the members have dedicated themselves to the ideal ideas of charity, unity, fracturing, co-fertility, and patriotism. Therefore, be it resolved that the board of trustees of the Village of Rousas Point needs council number twenty-three sixty-six on its hundredth anniversary and extends congratulations to all members in such a moral event. Motion, uh, roll call vote?
Trustee Felkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
And Mayor, Jim?
Aye.
Oh, my favorite mispronunciation, sorry. And I'll sign this, too. Trustee Arnold? Aye. Do we have anything on the rec center ceiling? Roof? Chris?
So, we, we do have an estimate to replace the roof, and it's approximately seventy-four thousand dollars. My recommendation to the board would be to grant, just to go out to bid.
We have to go out to bid.
Right, because of the, the dollar amount, it needs to go out to bid.
Think we can get a grant for this or something, probably?
I can check and see, there's, from what I've been seeing so far, there's really nothing. There's, they're, they're coming out with different things every day. So, but we definitely are in dire need of a new roof. I mean, we're having problems in the back section of the civic center where the zamboni comes out, where the insulation is actually falling onto the ice, which is causing a hazard to, uh, to the players. Public Works guys, Adam, have, came out and with, um, the air compressor, they tried to blow it off. We seem to be having a problem with increased humidity in the rink that's causing the insulation. But we have leaks in the ceiling, or in the roof, so it's in dire need to be replaced. One of the bids, or contract prices that came through, what they're proposing to do would be to be further roof up, with two-by-four, two-by-fours, and then put tin over the top of it. And, uh, for the price of the seventy-four thousand dollars, I think it's, it's feasible. And I discussed it with Arsen, and it's something that we're going to have to budget. We, we have a, a nice facility, we just can't let it fall to pieces.
Something really needs to be done in a building without a roof, it isn't much of a building.
And this has been going on for a period of time, it's not like it just started last night. It's been going on for a long time.
Okay, thank you. Can we make a motion to put it out to bid, or?
I think we should put the civic center roof out to bid.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for bringing that up, Ben.
Yep. That's all I have for now.
Trustee Menard?
Um, I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Trustee Felkey?
The Rousas Point Stars and Stripes Celebration is the weekend of the twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. So I know a lot of people have been calling, wondering when our Fourth of July celebration, it's really not called the Fourth of July Celebration anymore. So it's called the Stars and Strikes, so it is the weekend of the twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. And if you go on the village website, there's a tab on there, where you click on it, and it gives you, uh, the Facebook page for the Stars and Strikes. They have a lot of information out there. They're doing fundraisers right now. There's a committee meeting, uh, once a month, uh, the first Tuesday of the month, uh, at the American Legion. We get more and more volunteers to show up, um, that want to participate, so it's all good. So we are having our, uh, this year, they're going with, like, um, everything seems to be bigger and better, like, uh, fireworks, uh, the parade, we're trying to get more floats and, you know, more bands. They're doing the carnival again. Our department's doing the chicken barbecue, um, there's the events that's happening, entertainment on the weekends down here. There's a craft show that's going to be put on, where there's going to be craft booths, where you can go around and see different things that people are making, that they're selling. So everybody marks their calendar for the weekend of the twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth, because a lot of people are from out of town, and they like to come home and visit their family, and that's the weekend that it's going to happen.
That's June.
In June, yes. The twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth.
The twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth of June is going to be the Fourth of July Celebration in Rousas Point. That's going to happen that weekend, too. Brian, can you get to that?
Uh, the second thing I have is, uh, I'd like to, I guess, put it in a form of a motion to authorize the village to do the village-wide yard sale on the weekend before. That would be June eighteenth for all the residents. People are forward coming around this point, going to the different yard sales. So I'd like to put that in the form of a motion that we, uh, do sponsor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Uh, Trustee Rodriguez?
Tom's not here today, so I have nothing.
Any other reports?
I actually have, I don't know if we want to discuss it in an open forum or in a separate session, but a bill that we received from PLM. And the bill, the bill's in the amount of, of seven hundred and sixty dollars. And this bill resolves from, um, consulting, from when we were changing the breaker over at the substation. And Jed, you were involved in this, it has to deal with, um, conversations or emails that I had with Andrew. And Andrew wanted to know exactly the specs that were going to be taking place as, as far as transferring, um, from the breaker that's around now to, over to the new part of the substation. And I sent it over to Jason, Jason sent an explanation, but Andrew wanted something from the engineer, which was PLM. And for that response, which you were CC'd in on, um, they're charging us seven hundred and sixty dollars.
And that was for Andrew to ask them a question?
Well, Andrew actually asked me the question, but I'm not an electrician, so I couldn't answer it. So I sent it to our, uh, chief of our electric crew, to Jason, who turned around and tried to answer it, but Andrew was not satisfied with Jason's response. So then we had to send it over to Matt at PLM to get his response. So essentially, it cost the village seven hundred and sixty dollars for their response.
Can personally, personally, can you personally find the charging it to them? Billing them for it?
Billing who?
Well, ERS, I suppose. Because this is direct tax support for them, we probably wouldn't, we wouldn't have taken that cost on otherwise. I don't know what the legalities of that would be, how we can do that, and that's a tone question, and he's not here.
Just a question, was the answer that our chief electrical guy gave, the same answer that PLM gave?
Um, Matt had more details. So, but I, I just didn't want to, um, authorize this bill to be paid because I didn't feel that it should be an expense that the village residents take on without the board giving its consent.
Yeah, that's a fair question, because that's not something we asked, that was.
But, on, on the other side, at the board meeting, the board said that there would be no additional charge to, uh, ERS for this action.
Because of safety issue. So I'll make Andrew aware of it, and then.
Essentially, the village is responsible, the bill blew to the village.
It needs to be paid, clearly. I think they should pay it, but we might have to pay it in the interim, and we bill it to the manager. Because I want to bill it to them, since this is something they asked, and it was something they asked for a specific answer from an engineer. I make a motion that we pay for the time being, just to get the bill, so there's no late fees or anything like that. And then we have a discussion with Tom about, and then ERS going, this is something, and you asked, and it occurred to the vill, uh, village in expense for your benefit, and we want you to pay for it. But in the meantime, I don't want it to be sitting there getting late and accruing any late fees.
So did you want to get a second of your motion?
Seconds? No. So we'll just sit on it for the time being? Because I can also understand just sitting on it, waiting for it to sort this out. Is there any other reports? Any unfinished business in that regard?
We, we need to, uh, schedule a budget meeting. I'd like to have it Wednesday at four o'clock.
Is that this Wednesday?
Correct.
The night?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good with that time, is everybody else good with that time? Wednesday at four o'clock?
Did you wanna do it here or at the village office?
Here.
Here. That's all I have.
Okay.
I have one more thing, Jeff. I think something should be said about Lakeside Coffee. They were just awarded Small Business of the Year from the Chamber of Commerce, and I think that's very important for Rousas Point. I mean, they do an excellent job there. And, um, I think, uh, if anyone goes there, you should...
Sorry about that.
Um, I'd just like to remind the village residents to that our village elections are next Tuesday on the fifteenth. Please get out and vote.
That's all I have.
Now, are we gonna, like I say, are we gonna send a letter, like a resolution or anything, to a coffee shop or whatever? I think we should. I think we can. I think so, yeah. I think this is worthy of that. A resolution like of the Knights of Columbus? Yep. Also. We could do the roll call vote now, and that way it all just has to be written out, we just have to sign it later. Could we do that, Chris?
You can do that.
Okay, one for the coffee shop and one for the Knights of Columbus?
Yeah, we already got the...
We already got the...
I got the Knights of Columbus done, I did that resolution.
Okay. So do you wanna do a roll call vote for the...
For the... Yes. Trustee Talke?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
And Mayor, Jim.
Aye.
I'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you. Any last minute favors for the final public session? Go on once, twice, three times, and that is a no. Make a motion and two adjournments.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.